Please join me for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so tonight, we start out with the approval of the current agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda.
Aye.
With that then, let's approve, if we could, can I get a motion for the approval of the open session minutes of December 16th, 2019?
Motion to approve the open session minutes of December 16th, 2019.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, with that, let's move on to student comments. Owen?
Alright, well as always, I'd just like to thank the committee for giving me the opportunity to present to you guys today. First off, I'd like to wish you all a very happy new year, and if you forgive me if I'm a little rusty, I haven't done this since last decade. I'd like to ask for, sorry for that joke.
Three weeks.
Two hundred twenty times.
All those in favor of giving Owen a break on that joke?
Alright, well, we are kicking off the decade in a very exciting way here at Nittmuck. First of all, the much anticipated Inspired Learning Day. We start this week with our Inspired Learning Day, as you may recall, this was scheduled in December, but had to be moved due to weather. It will take place this Wednesday. We're excited to host this district-wide, full-day learning event, giving students in grades K through 12 a chance to explore this new model of learning and allow them for cross-school collaboration. So for my session, actually, seeing as though we're all pitching here, our very own superintendent, Dr. Maruszek, is teaching chemistry over at Henry P. Club School. And I'm going to be helping out with some of the chemistry, so I look forward to that.
It's all funny games until somebody loses their mind.
I'm going to make sure that they don't drink chemicals, so I'm gonna... Alright, so next up, we have breakfast with the counselors. So our counseling department will host their sophomore class breakfast with the counselors on Tuesday, January 14th, from 8:00 a.m. through 9:00 a.m., in the Nittmuck PDC focused on supporting healthy decisions. And this one I'm very excited for, is the Wilsonman Symposium. Ms. Wilson, Mr. Gorman, Mrs. Field, and Mrs. Ellis invite parents and members of the community to come and hear what their students have been researching. Students are presenting work that they've done as part of the following courses: Advanced Placement Biology, Advanced Placement Environmental Science, Engineering Science and Design, and Marine Science. I'm one of those students that will be presenting my work. And what I've been working on is a group of me and two of my peers. We have been working to map and expand the trails behind Nittmuck, right in the woods, behind the school. And it's a really great opportunity for us because it gives us a chance to not only collaborate with our peers, but with the landowner who's been so generous in letting us use these trails for so long, and also several notable commissions in Upton, so like Friends of Upton State Forest, a little parcel of that land is Upton State Forest land, the Conservation Commission. It's a really great opportunity to work with a lot of members of the community, and it's just a really great chance to, you know, make some real improvements out there. So we look forward to presenting. So the date of the symposium is going to be on Wednesday, January 23rd, 2020, right here at Nittmuck Regional High School, right in the gym. And it is going to be from 8:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And that is it. Once again, thank you all for having me.
Very good, thank you Owen. Next is community comments, anybody from the community want to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's comments.
Well, good evening, everybody. First off, I know I discussed this a little bit during our last meeting, but we have a little more information regarding our district's finalist status in the Kaleidoscope Collective. There's really two hurdles that we have as the final point. One, to have a community event where we bring all stakeholders together to kind of explain the collective, how the district's vision fits in with the goals of the collective. And secondly, a school visit, which will take place here at Nittmuck on the 23rd. But I can't reiterate enough, and I put something in the background notes, how excited we are to have this kickoff event, which will be a week from Thursday, the 16th, here at Nittmuck. And our vision is to kind of explain to all the stakeholders who have signed up, and I believe from the emails that we've sent out, so far we've got about 116 parents that have signed up, which has been great. To kind of discuss what is deeper learning, what does our strategic plan Inspire specifically say about it, and what are some of the innovative practices that are occurring across our district in all four schools. So we intend on making the evening very interactive for all participants to really reflect upon what are the skills, habits, and dispositions that kids need to be successful in today's workforce and beyond. But again, also that showcase piece to showcase structures, policies, and practices that are very innovative. So as I say in the background notes, it would be really well served to have that as a formal school committee meeting to kind of represent where we as a district and the committee stands in this work, and kind of to proverbial speaking, plant our stake in the ground. One of the interesting things since our last meeting that has come to fruition is what, as part of the Kaleidoscope Collective's vision, is assessing student learning in a deeper, more meaningful way. They're starting to give us more details about some of the carrots that they've put in front of us with regard to waivers from MCAS. And they're thinking initially a waiver from grade five and grade eight science MCAS. And in lieu of doing that, the collective creating some type of performance-based task where kids would work collaboratively in small groups, probably using some type of technology to solve some type of real-world task. So we're excited to learn more, we're excited to be part of this group of 19 districts and schools, and we'll provide more on this kickoff event on the 16th. I think Owen's still with my thunder, we're really excited about this Wednesday, this Wednesday, our district-wide Inspired Learning Day. And yes, he will be helping me in the makeshift lab at Club Elementary School. But we're really excited because this really represents something meaningful as far as a benchmark of all four schools working in harmony simultaneously on deeper learning. I gave you a link in the notes, hopefully you have the opportunity to check out the different offerings at all four levels. Some really interesting things, from cake baking to discovering different types of rocks, to dancing and so on. So a lot of opportunities, but keep in mind in all four schools, students had an opportunity to brainstorm things that they wanted to pursue. So we're really looking forward to it. Then, last but certainly not least, just a follow-up. I know last meeting I presented the most current Metro West Adalysse Health Survey results from our last administration in November of 2018. I thought I'd share with you these kind of infographic sheets that the Metro West Health Foundation is providing for schools and districts to kind of speak to what's happening with regard to, at least with these initial two substance use, probably the two most prevalent vaping and marijuana use for our community. So I think in having this information in a very user-friendly format is very, very helpful. I think we're still in the processing phase of how do we get this out to the community in a useful way. It's definitely being used to inform our decision-making with regard to future programming, future curricular changes, and the wellness curriculum based upon some of this data. But as I also know, we're really looking forward to having a follow-up session with the Health Foundation later this month, and also a district meeting on Thursday, the 6th of February, in talking about mental health data that is presented, and what are some vehicles or avenues to provide more wraparound services here within the schools. So looking forward to that. And that's my report.
Alright, so next on the agenda, subcommittee updates. We have the budget subcommittee. Alright. We have a budget subcalendar that we'll be publishing for the workup through the next, I'll call it, four, five months. And then tomorrow night, tomorrow?
It's tomorrow night at, I believe, Club Elementary School.
Club Elementary School. We will have another budget overview meeting.
Elementary programs. So Principal Swain and Gallagher will be presenting.
There's also now a multi-board reconvening? We will be, yes, we will be working to reconvene a multi-board meeting in the near future so that we can basically work with both town sets of boards around selectmen and the fincoms to provide an overview of where we're going from a budgetary perspective, and then funding and the challenges that we'll be needing to collectively work through.
And the meeting tomorrow at Club is at what time?
Seven o'clock.
Any further questions about that? Alright, let's move on to new business. New Mersey Civics Curriculum Update.
I would suggest, I don't know if you want to move around the agenda to have the travel request go first?
Okay.
I'm only saying that because we have a lot of great information to share about social studies.
You get to present that.
Yes, we have a lot of information, and I just wanted to propose that when I saw the order.
Let's do the travel request first then. Let's everybody have a chance to look at the travel requests.
So yeah, you should have in your packet, two requests, very interesting. One is from, correct me if I'm wrong, essentially the same trip that we did last spring as well. Correction, to Nassau.
Yeah, the students going down. This year, Dr. Carr is revamping the format a little, based on what we did here. He loved the conference we had here back in November. So he's taken some of those ideas and kind of restructured things. So I think it will be Thursday, the 23rd, I believe in the morning, and probably we could back till Monday. Do things over the weekend, pre-competes and stuff like that.
Sure. So it's essentially to the Kennedy Space Center in Merritt Island, Florida, and our students, our engineering students will be presenting projects for the In-0 Ice Epic Challenge Student Convention. And then the second trip, which is also in April, is for the Nittmuck varsity baseball team to travel to Cooperstown, New York, to see the Baseball Hall of Fame. And correct me if I'm correct or wrong, Chris, there will also be playing a game against Oxford High School, correct?
That's correct. So Cooperstown has two high schools and up-aged fields, they have little league fields, but they offer the opportunity for high schools to go and play on Legends Field. The name escapes me, but anyway. And basically, you rent the field, they provide you referees, and then you would take the opportunity to take the team to go visit Cooperstown. It's a pretty common trip for many schools in this area. Oxford, we chose Oxford because of our relationship with them, but they've already done the trip in previous years. So their coaching staff is familiar with it, they've actually been a resource for us. So in expectation, we've applied to see if we'll be able to do it. We should find out in the next three, hopefully three weeks, because we will need to set up the arrangements. And then our hope is to play either Friday or Saturday at the end of vacation. And then, you know, if we were to play Friday, we'd probably do Cooperstown on Saturday and come home, or we might play Saturday morning, Cooperstown in the afternoon. So it's a little bit up in the air, but between Coach Delrover and myself, we're figuring out the odds and the ends.
Any idea of the cost?
So the basic cost would be about $65 per student. That would get them a hotel, a hotel room, obviously, and entrance into the Hall of Fame. And then there would be some meal costs and things like that. That's, we would be parents to drive, obviously. We assume it would be popular because it's over vacation. You know, where we've sort of polled some parents that have kids that were pretty confident they would be on the team, and there seemed to be some interest in that. If we had to take a bus, then obviously the cost is going to go up. So we're sort of waiting to see what Cooperstown's decision is, and so we can go from there.
Any other questions?
Those parents would be core checked and all of it, yeah.
Yeah, we would have, you know, essentially, and I have done trips like this myself, I would be a chaperone on the trip. You usually have three to four parents who are dedicated chaperones. They're going to room around the kids, as would the coaching staff and I. That's their primary, then you'll have the other parents who are simply there to, you know, watch their kids. So like I said, I've had a lot of experience with it, and, you know, done well works, it's a great experience for the kid.
Okay, so, Owen? So may I get a motion to approve the request for approval for the Cooperstown, New York trip, the Baseball Hall of Fame?
Motion to approve the baseball team trip to Cooperstown, New York in April 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those closed? Anybody closed? No? Okay, this is approved. And then the request for approval for Kennedy Space Center, April 23rd through 26th, can I get a motion for that?
Motion to approve the field trip to the Kennedy Space Center, April 23rd through 26th, April 7th, 2020.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, both trips are approved, thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so that's the travel requests we have. If you want to go backwards through, then we can do the travel support contract?
The transportation. Okay. So as I said, you should have in your packet the actual contract for three additional years plus a two-year roller for clause. We had, I want to say, three meetings ago, considerable discussion about the whole dilemma that we and many other districts face as far as going out to bid. We did go out to bid, and on our due date of December 23rd, we only received one bidder, our existing contractor, Telstone &amp; Son. As you can see, if you look over the contract, our regular transportation expenses will be a hair under $1.8 million, or $1,798,200. That represents about a 6.6% increase over this current fiscal year busing contract. It is the better of the two options where the difference, if we did the existing year four roller for clause, would have been about $9,000 or more if we did that. So at this junction, this is really the only option that we have with regard to provision of transportation services, regular transportation services for next year. So you have it for your consideration for approval.
So I guess let's get a motion first. Do we have a motion to approve the contract, transportation contract? Make a motion to approve the Telstone &amp; Son's busing contract based on the agreement on the 6th of January, 2020. Okay, so is there any discussion about this at all? Other than the fact that, you know, because these are pretty substantial increases. I mean, I don't know what the percentages are, but it looks to be about, I mean, over the period, they're getting spike. Looks like, it's about like 12%?
About a 10% increase over the three years. Which is significant.
Yeah, it's annoying. And we've got no option, which is something we've complained to the state government now. So there's no, there's really no further ideas of how we can get out of this situation further? They've basically got us over a barrel.
I think, thinking big, I think you try to attack the problem short-term where a component of that, as you can see the breakdown, is about our in-district special education transportation. So specifically, the transportation that we have for preschoolers, and then transportation that we have for our plus eighteen students here at the high school who have vocational programs. And I think eventually what you slowly start to do is you, you know, look at different options that could be to have in-district transportation for that type of program. So I don't think we necessarily want to get into the busing business, but if we can take over some components of it, I think that is, we'd be very well served. And I think moving forward, we would have to look at some type of bonding or some type of financing option so that the district could take possession of the necessary type of vehicles that we would need for those services.
So we follow up, follow up with maybe the multi-board or something?
I think it's one of many things to discuss with the multi-board about how this is an ongoing issue. But again, as we said last year, we're not alone in this situation.
Alright, well, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing this proposal?
Aye.
Aye. Any in favor? Okay, that passed us. Alright, so that leaves us with the civics curriculum update.
So thanks, everybody, thanks for having us. I have here Ben Rosenau and Andy King, who are the department chairs for the middle school and the high school. And we were all, along with a number of other members that I'll introduce through the presentation, we're on the social studies curriculum review team last year. So we're going to be presenting a few things to you tonight. So first, we're going to outline the curriculum review process. We launched our curriculum review last year, it was the first year that we did a full comprehensive review. And so we will give you just a little bit of insight into what a curriculum review is. And then we're going to provide an overview of the new social studies networks, summarize strengths and areas of opportunity that came from the self-study that we did, and indicate some immediate first steps of what we're working on this year as a result of the change in standards and also the curriculum review. So the curriculum review process is, we put all of our different curricular areas in five-year curriculum review, starting last year. So last year, we ran social studies, and we ran the wellness curriculum review teams. And the first part of the study is the self-study here. And we spent the year analyzing the current curriculum and development of an action plan, and that's what we'll be presenting on. And in your packet, the school committee packet, you received our self-study report. We are not going through the almost 40-page report, you have all the details there. It's a set format that you'll see in all future reports that will come to you. But we will be highlighting basically our strengths and areas of opportunity, but you have all the information in there. And so then, after the first couple, the first year of the self-study, we head into the develop and redesign, which is the revision of curriculum. So we're in that year right now, we're doing, we'll talk about some of the steps that we're in. And then you'll spend two years on implement-monitor phase, and then evaluation of how we've been, and then you start over. So the idea is that we are, have ongoing curriculum review, and we'll talk about some of the reasons why that's important in our process.
When did you start, once you decided, where are we at?
So we did, when did we start the committee?
Current one.
The current one was last year. So that was the first year. And since I've been in the district, one of the first things that, when I came in, we didn't have a lot of updated curriculum maps. So you've heard over the years where we've been writing those maps. So once you have the curriculum maps, that's when you can then, and you have the three stages in place, then you can start the review. And so after five years of creating those maps, now we're starting that official review process. But we're still, are going to be faced with, the schedule may change a little bit if we're hit with new standards or a big change that comes out of our mandate. We purposefully started with social studies in this review process because we knew new standards were coming out, and we also have new legislation that we'll talk about, just so you're aware. so you're aware of that. So we did it simultaneously as a result. So why do we put it in place? Well, the purpose is to make sure that we have ongoing evaluation of our curriculum instruction assessment, make sure we have our highest standards for our students, and make sure that we're aligned to our standards based off of the best instructional practices. There are a number of different outcomes that will come as a result of this. It could be, we had, part of our meetings, we have lots of discussions vertically in our meetings, but it also leads to future vertical alignment and making sure that we also look at budgeting as a piece as a result. So we identified, there are a lot of needs that are put in there. So when you read the full report, we'll give some highlights, but you'll note that some relate to requests for future, you know, courses, or personnel, or resources. And it's a way for us to start to strategically plan over the years for our different needs.
So the responsibilities of our curriculum review team was to, first, we started out and developed self-study guiding questions. And then we looked at our current curriculum, how to align to our standards. We collected and analyzed data, so that required us, you know, talking to all the different social studies teachers, elementary, middle school, and high school, wrote up a self-study document, and then developed an action plan. So that was how that rolled out.
So as you can see, the timeline is up there. We started on October 3rd, and our committee met mostly for six full-day sessions. Each part of the meeting was focused on learning about the new frameworks and unpacking the standards. Instructional strategies around inquiry and developing performance tasks, and analyzing primary sources provided by moving to the group, and then building subcommittees to meet and analyze the data, review curriculum, and write, make in writing the self-study report.
When we, we'll present the wellness curriculum study report at another time. We found that was about this number of meetings because it's the first time that we did that. So this year, we're in our ELA curriculum review. We've had two meetings. We have another one coming up this week, at the end of the week. So we think it's going to be pretty similar in the process. I really want to thank the social studies curriculum review team. In some cases, we rotated some members from the elementary, middle, or high school. Administrators rotated in and out of some of our meetings as well to contribute. But our goal is to have representation across all four schools and across multiple grade levels. And it's an expectation that our curriculum assistants in social studies, we have two curriculum assistants at the elementary level in social studies, and as well as our department chairs are part of every meeting. And so they contributed a lot in helping organize and lead a lot of the subcommittee work at the building level. So we're going to launch into, before we tell you some of the highlights of our work on that committee, a lot of what we spent our time on was we're unpacking the new frameworks. And so we're going to spend a little time just to give you highlights because it has been, there's been some major significant changes. If you are unaware, in 2018, they came out with the new social studies frameworks. The last frameworks were written in 2003. And so our teachers, we've been teaching the same standards for a really long time, and we knew that there was a change that was going to happen, and we're pretty pleased with the work that came out from the state in changing the frameworks. You'll know, they present the vision right here for the frameworks, but they also added in education for civic life. There is a huge focus on civics and preparing our students in civics that you can find in the standards, in the frameworks. This is a visual that I think helps us out a little bit. In the past, with the 2003 standards, it was really focused on the content standards. And I'm sure you would agree, it was really content-focused, but there weren't a lot of references to skills or the types of practices that it takes to be a historian. And so they added in, just like they did with other standards in ELA and math and science, they have what's called the standards for history and social science practice. So part of our meetings, we took some of those practices out and focused on it. So one would be related to, say, primary sources and analyzing primary sources, and that's one of the activities that we did in the practices. Something else they did, they really tried to mesh the literacy standards and mesh them in with the history standards as well. So you'll see a lot of overlap in the ELA standards and some literacy standards that stand out that we're, are now incorporating into our work. So it used to be separate. Of course, we're always teaching reading and writing and interpreting and a lot of the same skills and speaking, but now they're embedded within our own framework. It used to be separate, and we used to have to go and say, oh, and make sure you bring that in. Now it's part of it, and they identify what ones that we should be teaching within the framework, which is really helpful for our teachers. This is just, I'm not going to go through all these grade levels, but this is a breakdown of the highlights of the units in our new frameworks. And the goal is to go deeper with the frameworks. So it's a big part of the push to have deeper learning. What I did is I highlighted a couple areas, there are more. There are changes across all of the grade levels, but the largest one that Brendan will talk about in a minute is grade eight is a completely new course. That used to be world history for us, the world experience one. And grade five added the modern civil rights movement. So that was added to grade five, which is pretty significant. What they had found when they reviewed the old standards, that students weren't learning about the modern civil rights movement until high school, and they thought that was a problem. So there's an introduction to it in that grade five. So grade five's pretty heavy. It has a lot more content in it than it has in the past. Some others, and say, grade three, they've always focused on local history and Massachusetts history, but you see a lot of incorporating of different cultures and backgrounds a little bit more than they had in the past. So there are updates, some where standards were moved around, and they also have recommended electives at the high school level as well. I highlighted the personal financial literacy, news media literacy. So those are areas that we know we need at the high school level and something that we're going to be, you know, looking into in the future to see how we can enhance our various electives. So there's a lot more, lots in the standards. We do reference some of this work and transition to it in our, a lot of it is also about the practices and how we're doing and learning and applying the content geography, history of standards, not so much about, it's not the old days of you have to memorize dates and have to memorize things. It's about the deep learning and experiences and how it affects us.
So yeah, as Mark was saying, one of the biggest changes was in eighth grade, where we went from the world experience to now teaching civics education. Really a big focus on having the kids understand, the students understand what their rights are, what their responsibilities are, kind of what the foundation of our government is, how the government works so that they will be productive citizens. Especially in eighth grade, you talk about kids that are 13, 14 years old. They're ready to be engaged, they're ready to make differences, and we're kind of giving them the, kind of a pathway, like this is how you can make the changes, what you can do. So that's really a big part of what we do, is giving them the history and, you know, how the constitution was written, things like that, but just applying it to what they need to know now. What are your rights? As an individual, what rights do you have? What rights should people have? What can you do about that? So it's really a big part of our focus, that engagement piece of it. And with that, the state has put across a law that a civics action project has to be done. So we'll start that eighth grade, we're going to try to roll that out Wednesday or Thursday this week. And it's a law that was signed 2018, and each public school, eighth graders have to do a civics action project. So it'll be, every eighth grader will be involved in some kind of class project, whether they'll go either into the community, whether it's Menin Upton, Massachusetts, Global, Misko Hill for our school, whatever it is, and they're going to do some kind of project to try to create some kind of change. We're going to have them do it. We have four, I have four classes, there's a total of civics classes. Each class will have its own project. They'll come up as a class with what their project's going to be. So we're really looking forward to see how 25 kids agree on something, different conversation. But we'll have eight different civics projects that will get rolled out at some point this year. So really excited to get the opportunity to do that and see how these kids can put their ideas in action, actually make a difference. So I think that's the big change for eighth grade this year.
So it takes impact this year too?
Yeah, it's, full implementation has to be next year, but at the eighth grade and also at some point, in ninth through 12, you need to have one as well. And they just released guidelines, so Andy's going to talk a little bit of, just about highlights that, it's a giant guideline packet, that's chock full of information, but he's going to talk about, yep, where are you going? Sorry. So I think I just clicked double-clicked, sorry.
Okay, so this is the pillars that the DESI released for the civics project. They have civics knowledge, civics skills, and the civics disposition. You can see in the first column that it's directly linked to the existing curriculum. The second one, civics skills, they take the skills and learn to apply it to into a project, and then disposition carry it through to an action step. So in the high school, we've decided that it will be the 11th grade that will carry out this project. It will be student-led, and we're beginning to develop it now. And we're hoping that with taking them through the skills step by step, that they'll be able to use the skills, apply them, and gain civic knowledge from participating in this And these are the building blocks of the student-led civics project. And you can see, as you go through the report, that these are following, or a list of essential elements of the new civics project, and they're going to be incorporated into the design. And you can see that they align clearly to the strategic plan for the district.
And if we refer back to talking about kaleidoscope collective, when you think about the type of deeper learning and teaching and learning that you want to take place, this is why, you know, this is one of the areas that we're, it's in the law, but it's something that's really exciting to be a part of it as well because it's really aligned to that collective and the vision for the state. So we're, again, it's kind of like our pilot year for it, we'll be trying things out, but there are a lot of network meetings that we've been going to and attending and working through the details and getting examples from other districts as well of how to improve upon these and build upon these and learn from others. Do not quote me on this, but just wanted to give you some information that was presented last year at one of the social studies network meetings. But since those slides were presented, we haven't seen any official information coming out from the department on what the assessment would look like. But the goals, they do have goals, that there will be a social studies MCAS assessment. However, it's going to look different. So what we know, for the most part, is the first assessment is going to be likely in the eighth grade and focused on civics. And that was a big push for why we needed to jump right into civics this year with the standards and dive right in, because that would be the first group. So we could get ahead of the game with that. And the proposal was that they had shared, was that the first pilot would be this spring. But I will say, I haven't, we haven't heard anything about it, so I wouldn't say that's likely, but that was in their original timeline and proposal that they shared with us, with 2023 being the operational, you know, testing that when it would be fully implemented. Primary source, we're a partner district with primary source, it's a PD provider, excellent. When I was a history teacher, I used them all the time. They were excellent, and they are contracted to design the assessment. We do know it will include performance tasks as part of the design. What they shared with us at the meeting was their draft proposals for the assessment. They were talking about perhaps having computer assessment on civic reasoning, that would be in March, two to three performance tasks, which would be locally scored and administered between November and February, and a summative performance task, performative task that would be state scored. And I'm not saying this is what the final test is going to look like, but this is what they were talking about. So a lot of our work in our instructional practices to get our, and we've been already working on this, engage in these types of performance tasks, and a lot of it will end up aligning to whatever the state is going to put out and share with us in the future. But just wanted to share the information that we received last year. So the implementation timeline, I've already referenced a few of these so far, but last year, the frameworks were released. We began revisions to social studies curriculum maps in particular, a lot. We received a grant last year, and our, a number of our teachers worked through the summer. I know our eighth grade teachers worked on the revision to the new course. We started to identify new sequencing to match the standards. And I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the sequencing? Can you give a highlight at the middle school, sixth, seventh? Just in general, what we changed?
So six-
Or looked at moving a little bit?
Yeah, so traditionally, for the last 15 years, I guess, with the standards, eighth grade had been world experience, seventh grade had been geography, sixth grade had been ancient civilization. So we kind of tried to make sixth and seventh grade almost like a two-year-long ancient civilization class and move that all back to sixth and seventh grade to make room for civics. We bumped up some of the world experience stuff up to the high school, a little bit of the stuff that dealt with the Renaissance, I think it was, the Middle Ages, the Enlightenment. So it made a little bit more sense for the students to go sixth and seventh in one area instead of, it was sixth grade ancient civ, then seventh grade geography, we're getting modern, and then we're jumping back into world, and it was just, that's a lot. So it was a lot more consistency here. And with the emphasis on civics being tied into even those world history classes, there's at least that continuity that they're constantly learning about civics, civic engagement, making a difference, things like that.
So basically, with that world experience one, we distributed it into high school and into our sixth and seventh. So the units that we felt were key and important, we integrated them. And we had already started that process anyways, just for sequencing to move some of the content. And we also, now we're integrating geography instead of having it be entirely separate. It's integrated with the, it makes more sense anyways, and it's how the standards are, it aligns better with how the standards are. You're in a region, you're learning about it, and you're going to learn how geography impacts that region. So it makes sense, but we are in this fluid, we're making adjustments and looking at resources, and it's a fluid process in order to do that. So then in this year, we need to begin, we're expected to be in our new frameworks. We have the eighth grade civics course, that is our first year that we're trying out that course. And we have to begin implementing that civics action project. We are piloting some newly aligned resources. So in sixth and seventh, fifth, sixth and seventh, we're piloting some resources that are better aligned, that were designed for the Massachusetts standards. So we're checking them out right now. We're looking at different resources, I mentioned it later on, but at the high school, that might be, have more performance tasks available. And I put pilot social studies MCAS, but we're pretty sure, since we haven't heard anything in this January, probably nothing's happening with that this year. And then next year is really, you see the words, full implementation. It is expectation for full implementation, and we're really trying to, it's a phased process for our alignment of our resources, but we are working over a number of years with that. And I'm sure I'm missing some things in that process of implementation, but it's a high level. So from our report, we wanted to share the strengths. I basically, there's a lot more information in the document, but we wanted to pull out some strengths in areas for opportunities for growth in the future. And then we'll end with some of our action steps that we planned that we're taking this year. So I'm going to speak about elementary, and then we'll talk about the middle and high school. So elementary strengths, they identified that pre-K to two have developed really strong community partnerships, and they've integrated their social studies into ELA units. Vertical work has helped make connections across the grades, so they've found when they are able to work vertically, it's really helped them. They've developed strong community partnerships in grade three, and in particular, grade three, again, is the local history and Massachusetts history, and so they have some great experiences that they've designed for the students in grade three. Grade four had the most changes, I would say, in elementary to their standards, if we're talking pre-K to four. And a number of the grade four teachers last year participated in our project-based learning training that we had. So they developed a project-based learning unit around natural disasters, but aligned to the regions, and they really thought it was effective. They obviously want to make changes heading into next year, but they already were launching into this a good year ago, into how to address some of the changes in fourth grade. So opportunities for growth, you're going to see time showing up a lot across the board, but time constraints are difficult at the primary grade levels. For them, social studies blocks, it's difficult to schedule, they don't have as much time. That's why it's generally integrated. They also identified there's a need for more time for grade three and four teachers to develop curriculum and common performance assessments. We'll jump to middle school.
So the middle school, a lot of our strength is content knowledge and experience of the teachers. Felt like just talking to the different teachers and being in the building, really a lot of creativity with the resources and developing projects. Project-based learning is something I think a lot of the teachers in our social studies department have been on top of for a couple of years now, really refined some of that. So I definitely think that's one of our strengths, and the commitment to professional development and creating civics action project. As Mark said, two summers ago, we were doing a lot of work, conferences, kind of, when it was coming up, so we tried to really get ahead of it to make the implementation of it not as challenging as that could be. So definitely some of the strengths. Some growth, again, common plan in time, I think you're going to see that everywhere, especially in grade five, where there's not as many dedicated- especially in grade five, where there's not as many dedicated social studies teachers. There's a lot of teachers that teach multiple subjects, excuse me. Professional development to expand the knowledge of the civics instruction, especially with the civil rights inclusion, really important thing to add in there, but something that they're going to have to adjust to and get ready for, get a little more professional development with. Inquiry process with the geography to be able to connect that. So as Marvin said, we're kind of implementing the geography in the sixth and seventh, seven having it as its own separate unit. So just how do we actually apply that to historical events and then teaching these new units? And then just more professional development with the civics curriculum. I mean, anyone that pays attention knows civics is constantly evolving, there's constantly things going on. We have an impeachment underway, and it's like, all right, that's great to teach in civics, but it's like, all right, how much do I really know about this that I want to be able to engage the kids and not send them in the wrong traffic or just say, hey, go look this up online, you know, you'll be fine, whatever, you're fine. So always room for more to be there, but, you know, a lot of strengths for the department.
So the strengths at the high school align with the portrait of the water. Teachers provide opportunities for student agency, experimental, experimental exercises, authentic learning. We have a lot of activities at the high school that use simulation and try to put the kids into authentic, real-life experiences and try to give them the skills to go through those procedures. We use essential questions, as most of the classes do, numerous self-reflection opportunities for students, and enhancement of learning through technology. Opportunities, as Brendan had said, requests for more common planning time, shared best practices, align curriculum and revise curriculum maps. Especially with the change, it's necessary to meet with the department and align those curriculum maps when they do meet the standards. Goals to work on horizontal alignment of curriculum to improve areas of common assessment. Timelines, understanding by design model, expectation and learning opportunities. Wants, an increase in vertical curriculum work so that we have more of a connection and more fluidity with the middle school, and need for more support and exposure with inclusionary practices and special education support, especially for the students that are all mainstreamed to the history classrooms. And a need for newly aligned resources for the standards. So we're adapting those standards as we're going through them and adding in materials.
So next steps, all I did was focus on our next steps this year, what we're already in it about, and I want to give you one highlight as well, but not transitioning. There we go. We submitted a collective civics grant right before, right in December. It was a work collaboratively with Hopkinton, Ashland, and Uxbridge. And the fiscal agent for that grant, collective grant, basically, if we receive it, and it's highly competitive, everyone basically is submitting for this grant, but if we do receive it, what I asked for was, was training through Primary Source for our eighth grade teachers to go through democracy lab training through Primary Source. And with that is generation citizen curriculum that comes along with it, which enhances, is really what's aligned with the civics action project. In addition to that, I requested EdTech teacher, they have a civics training that they provide, and that would be for the high school teachers on how to integrate technology into their curriculum, but it's focused on the new social studies standards. And also requested some funds, tried to sneak in some funds for our elementary for some more aligned social studies resources. There's more to the grant of what we said we would do. We said we would bring our eighth grade students together and do a showcase of our own, of their projects. So time will tell, we're supposed to find out in January if we were approved or not, but just to let you know that every year, the last two years, they've come out with grants. We got one last year, we submitted, hopefully we will receive it this year. But let's see, we completed, we're going to complete revisions for curriculum. So when we did a review of where we were at with, beginning our writing process with the new standards last year, we realized we still needed some time together. So we began with elementary, brought them together in December, and they have now rewritten their curriculum aligned to the new standards, and we're all set at the elementary level. And we just have to schedule time at the middle and high school level to realign any of the areas that aren't finished yet in our stage one and stage two. Primary Source, we purchased some units last year that will be distributed this coming month to the elementary teachers where they can try out, they're aligned to the new standards. And they're going to, we have the pilot I mentioned, Grade Eight Generation Citizen. And then DBQ project, we put in a budget, a request to try out some of the DBQ project modules, which are performance task-based, and we had some teachers that attended training last year with Uxbridge on that. And we already talked about our civics actions project. So as you can see, we've been busy, and we have a lot that we are already doing right now and a lot to come. But I want to thank you for your time, and we are happy to take any questions that you may have about the review or about the presentation.
So it's interesting, the kaleidoscope collective is proposing projects to replace MCAS tests, and here we are proposing MCAS tests to reinforce civics learning.
But I will say, these new tests are going to be the same, like the project-based type of test, the performance test.
Beautiful. Okay, wow.
For the most part. They still have that little computer assessment, you know, they don't think they're going to give it all up, but-
So we're test companies, but just-
Right. But that's what they, from the commissioner, I know with the group that was working on this test, or we'll say assessment, whatever it may look like, that they wanted to look different. And social studies teacher said, if you, if you want us to teach differently, then you need a test that's going to, you know, match what we're doing in the classroom.
Absolutely. So I've got two, can you pick for each of them, or go through the programs anyway? Because my daughter's aligned perfectly with both of those grade levels, so it should be interesting to see how it works. But the, it's interesting, the projects are, they can be community-based as well? So it's still undefined, I understand, but boy, I can't wait to see what those, what the definition of those things looks like.
Do you have any sense yet, Brendan, of what the kids might be thinking?
We've talked about it a little bit. The climate change is a big, a big thing that they're interested in. A lot of it revolve, there's been a lot of discussion, just improvements to like what their school day is like. So lunch, like, how do we get better food? Why can't we do that? It's a lot of, you know, why can't we have certain things? So it'll be interesting. We're going to start this week, either Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to start a brainstorming session, you know, what things really matter to you. We've done that a little bit earlier. They're interested in a lot of different things. Equality, rights for all people. They're really, they're really, which is great. And transgender, transgender community, the LGBTQ community, they're really, really pushing that, like, why isn't there more done about that, things like that. So they're asking a lot of really good questions. So I'm sure we'll find something-
And you have a lot of latitude as the teacher, working with your class, to define the scope of it.
Correct.
As far as, you know, is it going to be strictly within the Misco community? Do you want to do something larger than Menon Upton or connect with the larger state or something like that? You have that latitude.
Absolutely, yeah. Which is really good. I think it's great with all the resources, again, we can plug in with different places. Can we make connections other places? What are they doing? So, I mean, there's so much potential there, which is really exciting. So it'll be good to get the first one going and see.
And I would expect it's really going to evolve over time. So we'll look back five years from now and say, can you believe that's all we were doing, right? You know, and we know that the next year is going to get better and better, and then we'll have new ideas and new resources, so.
So from a civics perspective, because that's kind of like you're saying-
Yes, this is the civics action-
The new requirements are basically very civics-based work.
And yes, so you have the legislation for this student-led civics action project. Eighth graders have to do at least one, and high schoolers and the four-years have to do minimally one. So that's legislation for it. But then you have the frameworks, in the frameworks you have, they're required to take civics in eighth grade, so it's a whole new course in the eighth grade. And they also took civics, and I didn't talk about this, but they put it in all of the grade levels.
So we're de-emphasizing world culture and geography, and we're going to make room for it. Because basically, you get a year and a half worth of new course material in order to fit in, so you've got to innovate something.
And in some districts, they leave it up to you how you're going to do the World One and Two, and that's the sequencing conversation that we had. So we decide, this is how we decided to disperse it and keep the same World US One, US Two at the high school level. Other districts, some are saying, we're going to have World, we're so World-focused at the school. Like, I know a friend of mine who is coming here, Carrie Dunn, she's over at Weston. And World is their World History program. They said, no, we're going to have, still have World One, World Two, US One, US Two, and then they're keeping this, you know, four-year, you have to take these kind of requirements. So it's up to you how you do it, but you have to hit the standards throughout the grade levels. And they propose that if there ever is a test at the high school level, that it's going to be a civics or US-type based test is what is floated out there. And I can even give the history of the test because I was at high school. When I entered, it was the first year of MCAS when I was a teacher, and I entered thinking I was going to be a, because I majored in politics and US government, that I was going to be a US politics teacher. And then they said, oh, no, MCAS is World, so now you have to teach World. So all of us, we had all these increases in these World. And then they said, no, we're not going, we're going to move World down to the middle school. It's going to be a US test that we think we're going to have. And so then we all became US teachers at the high school, and World went down to eighth. And we've been kind of in those standards now, but no test has ever materialized because of funding. But we're pretty sure something, there is a commitment that there'll be something to make sure that what happened as a result of having no, any kind of assessment of any sort was the fact that we're really focused on ELA, math, and then the science and social studies. It was de-emphasized for number of resources, classes, et cetera. So there, the pendulum is swinging. It won't go all the way over here, but it's swinging in a better direction with civics being a prime focus. I know that's a long response, but-
Better direction, or just different?
A different direction, yes.
I mean, better, you argue it in different ways. Because what if you're going to de-emphasize geography and world culture, you're actually going to move away from a global, like, perspective, because you're just not going to have time to teach it.
Or that you look for other ways to teach it. So we could look to, at the high school level, bring in, so when I was framing him as a teacher, we had an international relations course that we added, or we brought in, you know, other additional courses that got at, like, I brought in an AP World History course. So we added those elements because we wanted to make sure that it wasn't de-emphasized. What I like here is that civics kind of dropped off in a lot of our focus, and I like that we're bringing it to the lower grades earlier than waiting till the high school.
Wow, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, they did a lot of great work. A lot of collaborative work, it's nice, it's good.
A lot of resources, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, old business. So we have the, we have, I guess, approval, right, for the January 16th as a school committee?
Sure, because technically you're changing the calendar.
So, I'm going to entertain a motion to add January 16th as a school committee.
Motion to amend the calendar to add January 16th, 2020, as a school committee meeting.
Second.
All this in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, is the next thing on the agenda?
We have none.
Okay. Other matters not anticipated about committee within 48 hours of the proposed meeting? Anything?
No.
Nope. Okay, future agenda items. We have the Mersey fiscal year 2021 budget, the initial projections on February 10th, which is our next, actually, two, two meetings now, now, two meetings from now. Any questions about that? Otherwise, I will do a roll call to executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to the successor agreement and the teachers' collective bargaining agreement, because doing so in open meeting would have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session after this roll call. So roll call.
Skelly.
Oh wait, we have to have a motion for that, I'm sorry.
I just did.
Did I? Okay, I guess I did. Okay, so roll call to approve.
We, Martin, I.
Sean Nichols, I. Aldous, I.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are into conference session. Thank you very much.